This is the first Tuesday of the month with Wapacka City Council Meeting.
Everybody to our regular scheduled council meeting, today is Tuesday, December 15th, 2015, 6:00 PM. I call this meeting to order. No youth of the month, let's do Pledge Allegiance. Everyone stand. Please flag.
The Pledge Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll ask Sandy to read the open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin State statutes, so that citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
Thanks Sandy, and take roll please.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Chuck Whitman.
Here.
Gillian Peterson.
And Eric Olson.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
Thanks. My turn to forget. Okay, consent agenda, we have a couple of items that need to be listed, right? Okay, go ahead.
Under number six, letter A, number one, the Finance Director's Finance Report was emailed on Monday, December 14th, 2015, and under number six, letter A, number seven, the City Administrator's Monthly Report for November was also emailed on Friday, December 11th, 2015. And that's all.
Okay, thanks. So with that, are there any items that council or staff would like to see move from the consent agenda to the regular agenda? Hearing none, we could take a motion. Motion by Hackett.
Second.
Second by Keeland, that we approve the consent agenda with those two additions. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Regular agenda, the regular agenda is as it's printed. I don't think there's any modifications that need to be done, so again, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Tell move.
Motion by Whitman, second by Dave Peterson, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Non-agenda items, public input, if we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, limit your time to five minutes or less. Anybody that would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item?
I'll take a moment, if you don't mind.
Go ahead, Dave.
Just reading in the municipality, the League of Municipality Magazine that came out maybe two weeks ago into our homes, I found one article that kind of struck me, so I thought I'd just share it for a minute. It was the article by the new president of the league. He is currently the mayor of West Alice, and does with commerce and economic development and people, and what's going to attract workers, and he says, there's always going to be jobs now, as the, oh, the baby boomers are retiring, so there's going to be jobs. They can pretty much go where they want to go, so what's going to attract the workers, and where the workers go, that's their businesses are going to follow them. I think our county people have said that, and Brennan, as I mentioned, that's, and Henry and Terry's here too, those kind of things, what we've got to think about. So what attracts the people to a town is what makes it unique and interesting, and those are the places they want to live. He listed six things here about, just in a tiny little article, six things about West Alice, and I was just trying to compare it to Wapacka, and just kind of, some of it's not very fair, because they're a town of 600,000, that's 10 times bigger than us. But, and he just says, well, we're the home of the state fair park. Okay, we can't do that. We've got Wapacka County Fairgrounds, pretty good, but not quite the same. They've got Miller Parks, not right in their town, but we have the Timber Rattler Stadium, not right in our town, but pretty close, and we have Lakeman Field, which is a nice, small facility, and that's even being considered for state baseball Legion tournament, a state tournament for the Legion next summer, is being under consideration. They have the, in his words, they have the greatest farmer's market in southeast Wisconsin. We have a nice farmer's market, a team here, and they have the most interesting restaurants in southeast Wisconsin. Okay, good. And the two new things he's really bringing up, they have recently opened a skate park, and they're thinking about working on a dog park. So, you know, I think we're doing very well, and that's a compliment to the community and the staff and volunteers that put this stuff together, former councils. Thank you.
Thanks, Keith. Okay, anybody else for some public input?
Yeah, I've got something, right?
Eric, go ahead.
It was brought to my attention, and it's kind of on the heels of what Dave's talking about, you know, we talked about, how can we bring families and businesses to our community, and my daughter brought it up, that we've got a billboard that I haven't seen yet, but right at 10 and 54 with a landing strip, and I, at first I said, oh, that's, you know, out of the city, and that's, you know, there's nothing we can do about it. She said, no, it's right, right in the city limits. So I thought, is there anything that we can do? Because that's, I mean, that's seen by everybody going by on the highway. I don't know who here has seen it, but I think it's just awful that that's right there in our city, and if there's anything we can do to get rid of that.
I don't know that we have the answer tonight, Eric, but we'll, we'll look into it, and we'll see what we can do there. We'll report back to you on that.
I would love to see an ordinance or something that we, that we just can't have that kind of stuff, boards that are so visible to everybody.
Well, my first guess is that there's nothing we can do, but, but we'll look into it, for sure.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. All right, anything else for public input? Paul?
I was at Brainerd Bridge Park, and I noticed that there's a great deal of erosion along the river that probably should be upped and or taken care of.
Andrew, you want to make a note of that for us?
No.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul. Should we just go down the line here, or? Anybody else? Okay, let's move on then, to department announcements and reports. We'll start with Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. My report is in the packet, and I just wanted to let everybody know that the financial software upgrade's been implemented. And in the report, I did provide everybody a new report that I would like to add to the list of bills that get approved, and that is the P card transaction register. We are now able to download all of the transactions off the website for the purchasing card program, and show how they are allocated into the general ledger. So you will have an approval line item for P card transactions each month, as part of the checks and disbursements. Also, we are changing over the cash receiving now to only one bank, instead of using the bank accounts for doing our cash accounting. We're letting the system do all of the work in the background, and we will be making our daily deposits to JP Morgan Chase. And what else? The auditors will be in January 14th for preliminary, and February 16th and 17th for final, and we'll be working on setting up some more changeover from the auditors that I will be doing internally in the department, otherwise I don't have anything else.
All right, thanks. Anybody have any questions with Kathy? Thank you, Kathy. Peg, library.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Well, we are just finishing up our fiscal year and spending the last few dollars that we have in budget for items to, for the public. We will be closed December 24th through the 27th, so that's a four-day closure for us, and a second four-day closure, the 31st through January 3rd. And we're never open on Sundays anyway, so. We still have our gingerbread house exhibit. I hope you can snap, stop by and see all of the wonderful and good smelling houses that the community has created, and you can vote for your favorite, and they'll be given a special prize. Tablet time is still 10:00 AM on Thursdays, and we have some people coming that are trying to figure out which tablet to buy for Christmas, or for a gift, or for themselves. So that's also a good excuse to stop by and just see what's going on with tablets in the, in the library world and in general. Our teen winter reading program is, the registration's on for that right now, so if you have any teens in your household that want to participate, they can win up to five free books by participating in that, and all of our details are on our website. Thank you.
Thanks, Peg. I took advantage of the tablet time a couple of Thursdays ago, and no matter how knowledgeable you think you are, you always learn something, so appreciate that, Peg. Brennan?
Thank you, member. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members. My report's on page 30 of the packet, just want to give a brief update on a couple of projects that we're working on. First off, we did have our third parking count that was done last week by our consultant, Sam Schwartz Engineering. They were up here for two days doing parking counts and also shopper survey with people traversing the downtown. A little funny story that she ran into is a bit of a challenge, because a lot of the shoppers that she intercepted were literally from the door of the store going to their car parked right out front. So it was a little bit of a challenge to get some shopper survey inquiries, but we were able to get that information. They are summarizing that data, and we are anticipating some public forum, whether it's through the planning commission, in January, February for the draft plan, and then that plan coming forward to the council in March for consideration. Working on the downtown master plan consultant search right now, along with our marketing study. I want to thank Eric and Henry, Terry Schultz from the chamber, Lindsay, our intern. And I'm probably forgetting a couple of people. Eric Fall from East Central have been mad a couple of weeks ago. We did review the 10 proposals and have narrowed it down to five for consideration for interviews in January. We are, also have Scott Christie from the Historical Society, and Alita Burr from the state helping on this process as well. But we are going to be doing five interviews in January, hopefully finding a consultant and bringing that recommendation forward late January, February for consideration by the council, not only the downtown plan, but also the marketing study. And lastly, I would like to introduce Lindsay Chemnitz. She is, will be a graduate of UW Stevens Point in May. Several of you know her as our intern within my department right now. She's been on since summer of this year, working on our zoning code, our summer nights program, and some other projects that we've been working on. Lindsay made an application for the part-time coenforcement officer, and we have extended an offer to her, and she has accepted. So Lindsay will be coming on board in end of January. Again, she'll be graduating in May from Stevens Point, so this will allow her a good opportunity to transition into the position. She's definitely already started taking on some of the, or at least making the efforts and driving around the community, and we'll be working with her and Justin and Roger in January to set up the coenforcement program. So Lindsay, if you'd like to stand up, at least introduce yourself, so.
All right. Well, I am Lindsay, as he said, he kind of said the basics about me already. I go to Stevens Point currently. I will be graduating in May. I am studying land use planning, is technically what my major is called. It's within the natural resource part, but it just relates to like urban planning, but it also has the conservation side of it. So, you know, where I've dealt with like erosion stuff, and all summer I've worked in depth with the zoning code, looking at a lot of the details. So I've had great experience working with Brennan and Ron, and everyone in the department this summer, and I'm very, very excited to be joining the team, and I just find it as a great opportunity, and I love the community. I'm originally not from here, I'm from Ripon, and just from this past experience this summer, I've really enjoyed it here. So I'm excited for my future here.
Well, welcome, Lindsay.
Thank you.
And good luck.
And on a positive note, she will be looking for residency, hopefully within the City of Wapacka as well, so.
Great, even better. Thank you, Brennan.
Yep.
Let's go on to Justin.
Thank you, Mayor. Page 31 and 32 is my update, starting with our wastewater plant. Our mercury reduction program, which is through the Wisconsin Pollution Discharge Elimination System, which is basically through the DNR. Happy to report we have 100% compliance with our local dentist office. That will be going in a report, which will be going to the DNR by the end of the month. We're looking for further outreach for next year, possibly going to some HVAC companies, mechanic places, and possibly doing like a roundup with fluorescent light bulbs, temperature gauges, just to continue on with the program next year. Our flight pumps have been installed at the plant. That was a project that was approved last year. They are installed, they're not running yet. We need Bauer Electric to come in and upgrade the electrical systems. Basically, these pumps replace those big screw heads at the beginning of the plant. Be much more efficient, and we should see some energy savings there. Staff is working hard, researching some corrosion control options for next year, hopefully to extend the life of our collection system. The BOD levels that I mentioned in the past, which is biological oxygen demand, are back to normal. We're not exactly sure of why they were so low, but we are looking into it. We're talking with the Chain of Lake Sanitary District and also the King Veterans Home, trying to see if we can kind of pinpoint it. So that, that investigation is ongoing. On the street side, we've been really, we're taking advantage of the mild weather, getting caught up on the work. As you know, and I've mentioned before, we've been short a guy for most of the year, and we will be for the next year, so we're taking the time. Leaves are pretty much picked up. We're moving on to sweeping up some streets, cleaning out storm sewer. Our snow equipment is 100% ready, but hopefully won't have to use it. So we're getting caught up. It's been easy on the budget, all very good things. We're even looking at doing some crack ceiling, getting a jump on it for next year. And on the street side, we did offer our skilled operator position to John Bartle. He has accepted. He passed his physical and drug screen, so his first day will be January 4th. So we're looking forward to him joining the crew. On the water side, we had our new meter reader come in. It's apparently really nice. The guys are liking it. It picks up the reads much more efficiently, so we've been having some issues with that lately. This new meter has helped us kind of pick up the pace and get back on the schedule with that. We've been just doing some routine maintenance on some hydrants, tested the fire systems at the Gussner Development, and also Plant One Foundry, and apparently everything was satisfactory. And then on my side of it, done quite a bit of outreach for the wellhead protection program, reaching out to the farmers, the crop consultants. I'll be presenting a crop agreement later tonight, and kind of a result of all that, we adjusted some of the pumping schedule out there on our wells. On the facility side, if you look at the notes, you can see that Russ has been doing a lot of just helping others. He assisted City Hall and Library pick up leaves, he helped the police department with the boiler, helped the library, helped economic development, moved some furniture around. He's been all over the place. Big thing, though, that he's been focusing on with me is a list of trees in the city that are either dead, dying, or diseased. We've gotten a really good response of working with people, cutting down these trees that could be either a safety hazard or just a risk to other trees in the area. And then on my side, I'm going to be shortly, in the near future, looking to getting some information and putting together some packets for my capital projects for 2016. So should be presenting some things here in the next month or two, and then looking for approval on some of the bigger projects. And it's come to my attention that Dean Steingruber, which is the county highway commissioner, is leaving Wapacka County and going to Outagami County. He's served the county for 16 years, and he will be missed. So they will be without a commissioner for, I assume, several months. That's all I have for you tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Justin. Any questions? Let's move on to Andrew, who's pinchitting for Aaron today.
Thank you, Mayor. Aaron is out with the flu, I guess, today. So just a couple of things to talk about briefly. I saw on there, he was going to talk about income a little bit, which I'll stay away from and let him deal with that next time. ActiveNet, we are currently continuing our training in our ActiveNet, which is the new online registration program for both activities, facilities, and senior memberships as well. It's going well. We're kind of getting into the actual learning how to use it now. We've set it up over many months, and it's going well. It's about six hours every Wednesday for us. We are on pace to go live with it when we're expected to in January. Like anything, when you change over like that, there may be some hiccups as we go, but we'll do the best we can to make sure that, that isn't an issue as we get into that. And that's really going to help us, you know, just correct a lot of things and just make things really run smooth over there. So I know you guys have talked about that in the past. We did have one minor issue with a drain pipe in our Augie Austin gym. We did take care of that right away, to protect that investment of the wood floor that we had. We did have to get some asbestos removed from that pipe and then replaced, but we took care of that very quickly, and that happened, I believe, last week with that. So that's something going on over there, but we did take care of it right away. On my end, coming up soon, we're adding a few more mixed or coed type of programs coming up. That was one of our focuses as I came on, for adults, is to add a little bit more coed stuff, maybe some lighter activities to get more people involved in the community. We're going to be adding a pickleball league, which I know I've talked about in the past, and it's just becoming more and more popular. So we're working on adding a court in our gym, moving some things around, so that we can accommodate that popularity. And so we'll be adding that, and then also trying to add what's known as cornhole, a cornhole league, also named, known as bags or bago, or, you know, there's a lot of different names for it, but the actual official name is cornhole as we go. So that's essentially, you know, you've seen that maybe at the pack or tailgating, or something like that, where you have a hole in a board about 30 feet away, and trying to throw it down there and get it in there, and all that stuff. So it really is pretty popular, actually, around here. They have some huge, huge tournaments in, in bigger cities, and maybe that's something we get to in the future as well, is maybe having a big tournament out at Swan Park in a time that we normally wouldn't have anything going on out there. So that's kind of what we're working towards right now for our park and rec.
Thanks, Andrew. Any questions, Andrew? All right, another pinchitter, we have Brian Hosel for Chief Coke.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief's report, he's indicating that this time we're doing really good with the budget. We're about 5.68 under budget at this time, so really happy with, with where we're at at this time. Another nice thing that's happened is we're finally at full staff. It's been a number of years for us, for the police department to be at full staff. Dan Wasrude, one of our new officers, who's from the city of Wapacka here, went by himself on November 20th, and he's been working shifts, and he's been really doing an excellent job. Another thing that we've been doing, both for the last seven, eight, or eight years, I've been working with Lori Chestnut, our department has during Christmas time. We've adopted a family, sometimes two families, in working with Lori, trying to find families in the community that have needs, that really don't seek out a lot of different, from different organizations about getting Christmas presents and that. And because of that, Lori was able to find us two families this year, and what our department does is each of the members of the department donate some money, and my wife and I, we go down and we try to get clothes and toys for the kids that are a lot less fortunate than the other people in the community, and to make sure that they have a nice Christmas. It's been always great to work with Lori, because she always finds the perfect families for us. And just to kind of go a little bit beyond that, this was the second year that there was a shop with a cop program. This year, we had six officers from our department that donated their own, their own time. Brett Rodenz assisted Cameron Durant in going in the community and getting funds for these kids that they could go and they could shop. And they were able to find 39 kids this year. And just with our department, we had the six officers, Brent Krieger, Diana Flatoff, Nate Nelson, Nicole Hahn, Sam Van Denter, and then Jerry Allen. Each of them donated a, a lot of time into this program and helping. But one of their real neat things for the kids was, they were transported by bus out to Fleet Farm, and they actually had a police escort. And when they got there, they had a certain amount of money that they were allotted that they could spend on their family. And when they were done buying that, there was a little bit of money that was left over that each of the officers in Wapacka County was able to go through the store and buy, buy a present for each of those children. And then they came back to the rec center, and they had worked with Andy and Aaron to make that facility available. And there was plenty of food and drinks, and even gas cards for some of the members that showed up, that had to drive a, you know, they had to drive a distance. So it's just some really nice things to see that, you know, going on in the community with just not only our department, but all the other departments in Wapacka County. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Any comments, questions for Brian? All right, let's move on to Henry then.
Thanks, Mayor. As Sandy noted, my report was sent under a separate cover. Just a couple things to note. I think we were aware of this. I'm not quite sure we were so aware of the timing, but the state has moved a whole different voter registration system. What was called SVRS to now it's called WhizVote. And I just want to say that Sandy's been doing a yeoman's job. She's keeping her good humor, because there's lots of, as Andrew noted earlier, when you go to new systems, there's a lot of hiccups, and there's a lot of hiccups, and there's some required trainings. But they're going to go live with this in mid-January, and it'll be used for primaries and going forward. I think it's going to save the state money, at least that's what they're touting, and they're touting ease of administration. That's, I think, a little bit of it's just getting used to it. So I want to thank Sandy for hanging in there. She's been very flexible with trying to get that system to work for us. So I thought Sandy, or thought Kathy might mention it, but we want to bring forward as a staff, we did hire a consultant with your permission to look at our TIF districts and do a long-range analysis of those, and we're going to be ready to present that to you early next year. And we want to do it sort of in the context of multiple sort of meetings over the few, next few months, tagging on to established meetings, but maybe one or two special meetings where we talk about the TIF, capital planning, long-term financial issues, and then, you know, our big projects that we, we know are coming down the pike. And want to try to plan that a little bit, so we'll be working with the staff on a calendar, and I can review that with you next month, but that, that's coming down the pike, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Henry. One other thing that we move on, that before we move on to, you might have heard on WDX, but Chief Olson, our fire chief, has tendered his retirement request as of the end of this year. So the fire district will be in the process of hiring a new fire chief, and that should be done early part of 2016. Just wanted you to be aware of that, if you hadn't heard that yet. Okay, let's move on then to unfinished business. This has to do with job descriptions, Henry.
Yeah, last month, we reviewed these. It was a direction of the council to go ahead and do one last review. There was some consistency, questions raised, and as I mentioned in the email distributing them, we put them up on the web, and they've been up there for a few weeks. But there was questions about actually calling out exact numbers of employees, because as changes are made in personnel, that becomes a possible thing to correct. because as changes are made in personnel, that becomes a possible thing to correct. So, I did talk with the consultant, and with your idea of maybe doing more general supervision kind of comments was totally appropriate, and that was included in there. And then for the department heads and myself, we did change the directing, direct reports to the council, mayor and council, and that was consistent in all the job descriptions. But beyond that, tried to go through every one and catch any grammar issues. In the one case, there was a mention of a Board of Public Works, and we found that and took care of that. So, I don't know if you have any questions. There was a lot of them. There's about 50 positions. They are grouped by department, so I thought that might make it easier for the council to review it. So, I don't know if you have any individual questions or not on that.
Anybody have a chance to look at them? Yeah, there were some cleanup items that I think were important on there. Otherwise, it was, I think it looks good to me.
I don't know if I'm the only one, but I did not get a chance to read them all. We have more reading to do this month than you can shake a stick at. And I personally would love to see it pulled over until next month, because I did not read it personally. I don't know about anybody else, but I...
I had a concern about exempt versus non-exempt in some of the classifications, and I don't know if this is the appropriate form for it or not. But the one that really surprised me, I thought, was deputy clerk. I thought of all positions, that would be exempt rather than non-exempt.
Well, when we, well, there's some legacy there, Alan. When the clerical employees moved to try to form a union, or they did form a union, there was some specific discussions on that position. And again, all the positions sort of went through the test of supervision, managing budgets, and that kind of thing. I think that's why that's an hour and a half. Technically, Sandy is a confidential, I think they use the term, I don't like it, but a confidential secretary when the union was created. And, but the hourly never came into question, that that sort of ran the test as a non-exempt position. Now, the bigger issue we have, and we don't know when this will happen, the feds are coming down with some new overtime rules, where they're going to bump up the threshold to where the city would be, and all employers would have to pay overtime to salaried positions. And I can't think of what the current amount is now. It's like maybe 26,000, 28,000, and it goes up to 51,000. And I can tell you, we have a couple of salaried employees where that could be, will become an issue if that rule comes down. Now, it's in the comment stages, I believe, and it's not been adopted. So, I'm not sure if it will be adopted, if it's adopted, if there's a timeframe, you know, when it will take place. But that is something we'll have to address in the future.
Alan, are you satisfied with the response?
Well, I've worked on many, many job descriptions over the years, and I, the test in part is supervision, partly how they get paid for overtime. If it is regularly scheduled overtime, that would typically be paid at straight time for that increment and for a salaried person. And that would be for an exempt position as well. So, I, no, I'm not real satisfied yet with how it has evolved and where it is right now. And it's just the one position that struck me as perhaps should have been exempt rather than non-exempt, but...
So, explain to us, Alan, since you seem to be a good knowledge in that, what would the differences be between exempt and non-exempt?
Supervision, for one thing, regularly exercises independent judgment is another criteria that would make a person exempt versus non-exempt. Those are the two big ones that I've dealt with in the past. And I've worked both sides of the issue. I've tried to write the job descriptions for exempt and got overruled, and vice versa. So, I think this is one that could be challenged down the road. And just, I'd say, be prepared for it, I guess, would be the only thing.
If I may add on to that, our organization has had the running rule with salaried people that you're expected to work more than 40 hours. So, our time here tonight does not count towards hours worked. Now, some organizations in Wisconsin allow salaried people to, you know, track that overtime. We don't, because salaried people do have the benefit of, you know, other judgments and, you know, how their time is organized. So, we've not said that. We also have had a longstanding policy on flex. We've got a flex policy, so many times, in the case of salaried employees, it might have some overtime. I don't want to pick on Sandy, but tonight, many times, we make that up later in the week to where she can leave earlier and stuff, so we're not susceptible to overtime. So, we manage, try to manage the hours worked as close as we can. But sometimes, you know, elections, of course, is a lot, a lot of hours that, a lot of times, we do pay that.
Henry, when this company that we hired to help us with these job descriptions, did they give legal advice?
They ran that through, there's some tests, and they would follow the guidance by the Department of Labor on those tests. So, I think they feel comfortable that the non-exempt positions are non-exempt. And they feel comfortable, what's happening a lot, a lot of times, it happens in the private sector where they designate people salary people, so they don't have to pay overtime. And they don't have the independent judgment, and they maybe not have direct supervision. So, and they're not managing budgets. It's a cost, you know, it's a cost thing for them. And I think that's where a lot of these, the motivations to raise that rate that overtime gets paid, because, you know, either you've got to manage the people or you pay them more. If they're going to be, you're going to designate them salaried people, then, you know, you're going to have to pay them more.
Well, I'm not going to arm wrestle over this. I mean, it's not that big of an issue. And if we had consultants working on this, then that should answer the question.
Could we hold Sandy's out and do the rest, and just look at that a little differently?
Well, we can do whatever we want to do in this case. We do have a request from older person, Hackett, too, though, that he would like to see it put over to the next meeting or the next month, or...
Maybe I should ask the question. Did everybody read these things? No, I did not.
I skimmed some of them due to the time.
I skimmed too, but I didn't read them.
Yeah, I, this is not a super complicated process. I, you know, there were some errors in there, a lack of consistency, but we went back, department heads, I double-checked them with the consultant, to make sure we have them. Their general directions of work that people do, we have the catch-all, right? Other duties as requested or required. You know, I don't know, obviously, whatever you want to do.
Well, the process was that we were going to take a look at the department heads' job descriptions and use those to, as an example for the other job descriptions. So, if we're not happy with that process, and we want to look at each of the job descriptions individually, we could, and vote on those individually, we could certainly do that. But a few months ago, when this was coming forward, this is what, how Henry suggested that it was going to, to how he was going to handle it. Now, if we want to change, that's fine, but he's just following what he said that he was going to do. And we put it off for one month, because I think we felt that there were some things that needed to be changed. We want to put it off another month. I don't think there's any big deal. Nobody's...
Well, you know, it's, you know, I'm always a guy who wants to check stuff off the list, you know. So, it's fine. If you want to get the consultant on the phone next time, so you can ask these questions, whatever you need to do to get them adopted, so you feel comfortable. There's nothing nefarious in these descriptions. They're pretty straightforward. You know, these are job duties, you know, all of us here have, most of you here probably have a job description. You try to get it as current as you can, and that was the purpose of these. I mean, they're 17 years old, 16 years old. I mean, there's a lot, been a lot of changes in duties in 16 years. And this is, they're just brought up to speed to reflect that. Employees had a hand in developing them, the supervisors, the division heads. It's appropriate reviewed them, department heads have reviewed them, I've reviewed them.
Well, again, Henry, we can appreciate the amount of work that you put into it, but if somebody feels uncomfortable about voting on it, you know...
I would say too, though, that, other than the department head job descriptions, I don't think the other ones have to come to council. I think that's coming up to a higher level. I don't think you want us micromanaging that stuff. And I would, I would vote to say only the department head job descriptions would be reviewed by council, and the rest of them, done by the department heads and appropriate staff.
Oh, good. We got plenty of answers there. What do you want to do here?
I'm okay with that, Al, because when I read the minutes, that's what I understood also. But then I knew that we were supposed to read them all, and I got only the department heads read, because that's what came up in this package.
I will make it a motion, then, that council review only the department head job descriptions and let the other ones not come for council action.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a, so we're not approving them, we're setting up a process here. So, if I understand it, we have a motion by Kealan, second by Hackett, that when we do vote on these job descriptions, we're only going to be voting on the department heads' job descriptions, and I'm assuming that includes the city administrator...
Yes.
...job description in on that. So, anybody that is at the level below that, then we would not be brought up at the council level. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Want to voice vote this? Okay, so, we're not voting to approve those job descriptions yet. We're just voting the process here. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried.
We'll have it on next meeting's agenda.
Hey, go on, sir.
I just wanted to say that we did go through the executive employee exemption test for one of our employees that was classified as exempt, and we reclassified that as employee as non-exempt. And one of the criteria is that the employee manages other employees, and I'm not sure whether that deputy clerk position has that, and also directly affects the work of people who work for them and whether they have the authority to fire or hire employees. So, I think I would use that test towards the job description for the deputy clerk.
So, am I okay in assuming that we can go forward then and just, if somebody would like to, make an approval of the job descriptions for the department heads at this meeting? Are we okay with that?
I'll make that a motion.
Okay. Motion by Kealan, second by mail, that we approve the job descriptions for the department heads for the city of Wapaka. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. So, the assumption, Alan, and before I move on is that the department heads or their committees will approve any of the subordinate job descriptions, is what you're saying? Okay. All right, let's move on to new business. This has to do with the snow removal policy. Paul, are you, Paul Hagan?
Certainly. On page 138, there's the airport boards new snow removal policy. Basically, what this entails is if any entities at the airport are looking to have additional services or to have snow removal done during non-regular time hours, that there is now a process for going through and billing them for those additional hours if it is deemed that those are above and beyond what normally occurs. This is the first year that we've done this. It's kind of a trial year to see how this works out. This was done with the input of everyone involved, including the boundary. So, it was certainly to the satisfaction of everyone there that there was enough input. I'd like to recognize Henry Velker for his work on this. It was extremely helpful. He went above and beyond in helping us with this. And with that, I would move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Hagan, second by Chestnut, that we approve of the snow removal policy for the airport. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Next is Resolution Number 1360. This has got to do with the Wapaka County All Hazards Mitigation Plan. Henry?
Thanks, Mayor. Due to some time constraints, and you see the cover letter, there were requesting that this move forward fairly quickly. There is a resolution that all the entities within Wapaka County are being asked to adopt municipal entities. This process started maybe almost three years ago. The county officer management took the lead and convened a meeting. And basically, the bottom line of all this is if we were ever to have a natural disaster, if we don't have this plan in place, the ability for us to get some additional FEMA funds would be really hampered. Now, we could do some stuff with cleanup, but what we've done here, too, is provide a situation where we can potentially apply for grant dollars and that kind of thing based on this plan. The beginning part talks about, you know, types of natural disasters and things we're susceptible to. We are blessed in a lot of ways that we're not as susceptible as many municipal governments around this country are, and even in Wisconsin. But this plan basically allows us the ability, when and if we need to, access some federal dollars. They did hire a consultant to do it, put together the plan, and it was based on input from our cities and the towns. So, I don't know, I'm probably not prepared if you get real deep in the woods on this. But it's a formula plan that the county's going to use that we are part of. And they're assembling all the approvals to put it together to get it submitted to the state office of emergency management.
Okay, so with that said...
Page 144.
We are looking for an approval of this Resolution Number 1360.
Move to approve.
Second.
I'm sorry, who said that?
Me.
I'm sorry, okay. Motion by Keel and second by Mail that we approve Resolution Number 1360. This is adopting the Wapaka County All Hazards Mitigation Plan. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Ellen Keeland?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
And Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thanks, Henry. Let's move on then to the distribution of the hotel motel tax funds. Paul Mayo's handling this.
Thanks, Mayor. The room tax committee met last week and is recommending that the room taxes available for distribution be allocated as follows. Wapaka Historical Society, $7,000. Wapaka Curling Club, $17,900. Wapaka Community Arts Board, $6,000. And the Wapaka County Tourism Cooperative, $3,250. And I would move that council accept the recommendation.
Motion by Mail, second by Olson that we approve of those distributions as older person, Mail, sorry about that, older person Mail has stated. Any discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Ellen Keeland?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
And Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, next is dealing with the remaining amounts that are left in the room tax receipts. Henry?
Yeah, for first time that I can remember, there was actually more money than requests. I mean, that's very unusual, and I'm not sure why we didn't get as many projects, but that is what it is. There was a balance of $7,130. It was the committee's recommendation to basically keep it aside, and I understood it, and I have a couple room tax committee members, that they wanted to, the vote was to move it, and assuming you approved the contract or agreement with the Wapaka Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, those funds would be made available to them for future distribution. Yeah. And I think because that was a recommendation, we have it as a separate item for the council to discuss and make a decision on.
Okay. Any discussion? Motion on this? Although, go ahead, I'm sorry, Paul. I was just going to say, as I thought about this, is from what I understand is we have at least one more year where the city, and maybe two years, where the city still controls those room tax funds.
Well, that I don't have a good answer for, Mayor, because I know...
Well, we at least have one year.
Well, I think the idea was that it gets collected, and this has to be in place January 1 of 2017. So we've taken the position at this point that the funds get collected, and this new arrangement, they'll distribute it January 1. Now, I, I don't know, they're talking about some technical corrections, and if you're getting ahead of ourselves a little bit, but in the room tax or the agreement with the convention bureau, is that if there are some changes in the subsequent coming months or whatever, that that agreement gets reopened and looked at, because we just don't know. There's been questions of interpretation, and I just don't have a good answer for you on that. I don't think they've definitively said anything, or determined anything, I should say.
Okay, Paul?
I was going to make a motion to approve the disposition of the $7,130 to the new entity when it comes into existence.
Second.
We have a motion by Mail, second by Keel, and that we approve the distribution of the $7,130 to be distributed to the new city tourism entity. Any discussion? Actually, this would help, I'm sure. They've had some legal costs in getting it up and running, so this would probably be a nice help to them so that it wouldn't come out of just their general fund, general fund.
Actually, I believe our intention was that the money would be distributed to new applicants that would come before the new tourism entity. It wouldn't go to the entity to help with their expenses. It would be put aside, so if somebody, again, a curling club would apply, it would be available for a curling club grant, or whoever, arts board, or whoever would apply for room tax money. That was our intention, I believe.
That's your intention, although we can't control how they decide how to use that money once we give it to them. But, okay, point well taken. There'll be a couple of people that are on, in here that will be on that committee anyway, so, and Terry's here tonight, too, from the chamber, so understood. Any further discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Ellen Keeland?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
And Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Next, then, we have, I see Josh came in, WapakaOnline.net proposing a pricing change?
Actually, it's a new tier of service we're looking to add. We need to get approval for the rate for that. Due to the upgrades we've been doing on our system, our back hall network, which is what ties everything together, has a lot more capacity than it used to have, and we're comfortable connecting a selection of customers directly into that system instead of our customer access points. And what we brainstormed was to offer a higher quality business, broadband business plus service. And that'll allow us to do a few things. It would allow the customers to get a lot more speed than our regular customers would be able to. I mean, we're talking 20, 30 megs are a possibility there for a business that really needs a good connection. We'd be able to offer more upload speed, and our back hall network operates in a different frequency range than everything else, so it's another area that's a little more isolated from standard interference. And actually, we're kind of jumping ahead here. Next spring, sometime, I'll be coming in with a proposal to revamp our pricing structure, again, due to these upgrades, to make our, keep our pricing attractive and onboard with what the upgrades are allowing us to do. This kind of ties into that, but we're farther ahead on this part of the project. I'm already start offering this now. So the proposal would be $40 a month service fee for that, and that's all inclusive. We're planning next year to propose tying our maintenance fee into our connection fee, because we've got too many fees when they explain stuff to potential customers, and then $3 per meg, one meg increment on top of that price. And there's an example in your packet how that pricing would work out. So $40 a month for a connection. Right now, a business in the city would pay $25 a month, plus their maintenance fee, plus their bandwidth fees. This is about $10 more a month, starting point for a better, for the broadband business plus connection. So that's just kind of a gist of what we're doing, just a, you know, better quality connection that'll allow us to offer more capacity for select businesses who demand something more than a standard connection. Any questions, comments?
Josh, is there a maximum that they could purchase?
Well, it's individualized. It depends on, you know, their line of sight, how good of a signal they're getting. But, you know, one example, and this is, this was done a while back, but we've got one customer about six, five, six miles north of town that's getting a 25 by 25 meg connection. He's paying a lot of money for it, so he's kind of our example of what this service could potentially offer to some businesses. But, you know, this would be more, you know, we're thinking more industrial parks, someone out there that is really looking for a lot more speed than, you know, a small downtown business that might get, you know, bifine on five or six meg. So that's kind of what we're targeting, or maybe trying to get some of those bigger businesses in the business park. And honestly, there's some limitations in what's available out there for internet, too. So that's a good place to start offering this.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Mail?
Second.
Second by Keel, and that we approve of the pricing change that Josh has just discussed. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
And Ellen Keeland?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thanks.
Thank you, Josh. All right, next we have Kathy, who's going to talk about the budget transfer policy. Kathy?
Thank you, Mayor. In the 2016 budget process, the council set aside $250,000 in a contingency account. The city currently does not have a policy to handle a transfer from contingency. So I did go out to my peers and asked for, anybody else had a contingency policy out there for transfers? And what I got back was that most of the contingency transfers were handled through a budget transfer policy. And so I used the policies that I received and developed a budget transfer policy that would allow council control and a little bit of setting the bar for where it's okay for the department within their accounts, as long as they're not salary and benefit accounts, to be able to overexpend. So if somebody one year had $500 more in postage, I didn't expect them to charge that postage someplace else because there's money there. That way, you get a better trending on your expenditures, and you don't have people splitting up a bill just because they're following the money. In my past experience, that's happened, and so when you try and find where that transaction is, is you'll find it's been bifurcated into five or six accounts because that's where the money was. So in developing the policy, I went through with the statutes for the state and developed that the level that the council is going to adopt a budget policy is, is that it's on the appropriation level that the budget's adopted at. So you have your public safety, your general government, your public works are your main appropriations. That's where your big pools of money are. And then from there, each appropriation has a, in my, in the policy has an account, which is really their department. So you have the city council, the mayor, the city administrator, accounts which make up that appropriation. The level that I'm looking at is that the council would have to approve transfers between appropriations, between a public safety and a general government, or between a fund, so that if there was a transfer between the water and sewer fund or the hotel motel tax fund and the general fund. So I'm looking for council approval of two-thirds majority. And so the contingency account usually ends up coming, it's in a department, and so now it's going to require council action to move it into a different account to, or department, to be able to utilize those funds. So that takes care of your contingency account. There's lower level transfers that are required my approval before they can be done, ones that are required myself and the city administrator to approve. But at any time, if we feel that it's a transfer that would be required of council, we would bring it before council. I did provide for emergency situations. Hopefully, it's considered an emergency, and we know ahead of time before we spend the money. So it's just an all-encompassing budget transfer policy and one of more of financial policies that will be coming in the future. So this is part of your start of your financial policies for the city.
Okay. Everybody understand what we're doing here? I think one of the key things that, and it's right in the second paragraph on page 472, that was the request of the council when we talked about the contingency fund, that if we were to use any of that money, then it would take a two-thirds vote of the council to approve that use of that money. Okay? And that's built into this policy. That was an important part that I thought that you all wanted to see in there. I guess I have one question, Henry, and I didn't think about it till now, is that is this policy going to be in conflict with anything that we currently have? And I know we had...
I don't know. You've been reviewing.
I did not see any ordinances that had adopted budget transfers, so setting up this policy not as part of the ordinance is, you know, just a guidance of council.
So all department heads will be able to go to this and be able to use this for transferring of funds?
Correct. It'll be the guidance that we would adopt. It also will become part of the budget book when we finish the development of the budget book for the public, is they'll see what the budget transfer policy is and how funds have to be moved. One of the other things is, is depend, if council does do a budget transfer, it will require a resolution and publication. So, because you'll be transferring and changing the budget that was adopted.
Yeah, we still have the procurement policy requirements that have to be filed for bidding and all those kinds of things.
Right, and this kind of dovetails that.
And in no circumstances are we talking about right now any time that we would expend money that has not been budgeted. We're talking about just budgeted money.
Correct.
Through this whole thing. Okay. So this was actually probably one of the final things that we were making sure that we got in place before the beginning of the calendar year when our new budget starts. So we wanted to make sure that we got this into this agenda. So if we don't have any further questions and you feel comfortable with approving this, I would be looking for a motion to approve.
I'd move to approve. Second?
Motion by Mail, second by Dave Peterson, that we approve the city budget transfer policy. Any discussion? All in favor, yeah, all in favor is signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Next, election inspector, Sandy?
As I stated in my memo, the state statutes allow the two major political parties to submit a listing of election inspectors, and this is due by November 30 of odd number of years. So this would be for the 2016, 2017 election cycle. I did receive a listing from the Democratic Party, but nothing from the Republican Party. So the Democratic listing letter is in your packet, and I also included my remaining inspectors that are already trained. They just need approval for the next election cycle.
Okay, so Sandy's asking that we approve of these inspectors.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Keel, and that we approve... Motion by Hackett, second by Kealan that we approve of the election inspectors for the 2016-2017 election cycle. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Thanks, Sandy. Next, we have a cropping agreement between the City of Opaque and John Schrader. Justin?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Page 480 is my memo with some details on the cropping agreement. Behind that on 4142 is the actual agreement. This is an existing agreement that is due to expire by the end of December 2015. This crop agreement between the City of Opaque and John Schrader is for the wellhead protection by our wells five and six south of town, just off of County Highway E. And basically, the only thing that has changed from the previous agreement to this one that I'm proposing is just the date. The acreage remains the same at approximately 437 acres. The price for compensation for Mr. Schrader is the same as it was the last three years. And this has been in place and is part of our wellhead protection program. So the whole thing is to protect our groundwater supply to our wells five and six. And with that, I just recommend that the common council approve the 2016-2018 cropping agreement for groundwater protection between the City of Opaque and John Schrader.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Pritchatsky that we approve of entering into a cropping agreement where the city will pay John Schrader to minimize groundwater issues that we have for the years 2016 through 2018. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
And Alan Kealan.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Okay. Thanks, Justin. Let's move on to the code enforcement and building inspector software, Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. My memo starts on page 483, and as I'm scrolling through, it looks like somehow Kathy's policy got injected into my PDF. So the second half of it starts at 489, on the second page of it. But what we're bringing forward this evening is, as part of the reorganization of my department and trying to provide better customer service to the community, over the last year, we have been investigating, bringing on, bringing forward some code enforcement and building inspection software to better manage the applications in our department as a whole. It's kind of similar to the process that the Park and Rec Department went through earlier this year, you know, to try to be more efficient. They have a lot of paper applications, so we're trying to utilize a similar method. But also in general, we've had some challenges, especially on the code compliance side of it, in some applications over the past year, year and a half, of not having a good case management process within the department. And as I mentioned, we've been looking at software for a good portion of the year this year. I've brought Josh on board, and I've been also speaking with Kathy as well when it comes to the financial portion of this. But I have reviewed about six or eight different packages over the course of the year. What we are recommending is going to more of a mobile work environment, as many of you are aware, between my building inspector, who is a permanent part-time employee, and then also our new code compliance officer. Both of those employees will be utilizing more of a tablet-based, mobile work environment, so less time in the office and more time out in the field where they are needed, whether it's on inspections or whether it's traversing the community, making sure that things are brought up or are in compliance with our zoning, our building codes. The software's definitely going to help us manage that process, but also it's going to provide a tool for the community to be able to make applications online. It's also going to have a 311 scenario that will also, will interject with, if someone were to file a complaint, it would actually get directed down to the individual that it's supposed to be assigned to, and then get dispersed from there. I have brought Justin on board and up to speed on this software package as well. Incidentally, once Justin got on board, he actually started looking at a software package for his department as well, in the public works area, and this would have the ability to expand in the future if the desire was needed for sewer utility, water utility, stormwater as well. This system also does bring a lot of our departments together on one system as well in the future. What we are looking for this evening, there's two options for consideration of this software equipment. The staff is recommending option two, which is a three-year lease. We are recommending that we approve this this evening. We had some unutilized funds this year from savings within my department. That's how we are covering the expenses for 2016. And then as the budget years come in 27 and 2018, that will probably have a minimal, a small increase in my budget. The increase in building fees will cover a portion of this, but then if we bring other departments on board, some of those costs may be absorbed within their budgets as well. I open it up for any questions that people may have. The three-year lease does have a savings of almost $16,000 instead of purchasing the equipment outright, or the software.
Anybody have any questions?
I do, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Brennan, what other departments would possibly use this, and how would they use it?
Right now, there's, so the main module is, what we're going to be doing is actually importing a lot of our, a bunch of our GIS data into it, and it's going to actually, all the tax parcels in the city will actually be imported into it as well. So the ability for, actually in the future, for instance, if the clerks department wanted to put pet licensing on there, they would have the ability to do that. Mainly, right now, we've been focusing on my department, which is the code and code compliance and the building inspection side of it. That also comes with permitting as well. Again, people will have the ability to come in and fill out the permits right away. One of the complaints that I've had over time is, we have a very archaic system that we have right now, and a lot of the applications are very challenging or difficult to utilize right now. So this will actually have the ability that someone will be able to go online, fill out the application, actually make payments online if they want to, and those permits would actually get funneled to John Lush, for example, and be able to minimize some of the in-house needs, again, providing a little bit more customer service and having those individuals on the field. Specifically, other departments, Justin did sit in on a demo of the software. We did, once Justin brought me up to speed, he was looking at some potential software. Justin would have the best utilization of department coming on in the future. Again, utilization of the GIS portion of it on the field would be tremendous, because it would actually be, because it's web-based and mobile-based, it would actually provide up-to-date information on that end, from a stormwater, storm sewer perspective, work order system. Those are the things that Justin was looking at potentially next year or into 2017. So that is the main department that would be brought on forward. But again, what's unique about this is that we've had some challenges, and even, we've talked previously about people that come in asking for applications for liquor licenses and everything else, the clerks department will actually have the ability to look up on the system, see whether or not there's any outstanding fines or fortunes, or tickets that are against them as well. So that'll be another level of, I'll say, security when issuing permits and everything else, that people are actually being brought into compliance on it.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? I guess I would have one that apparently you're more comfortable leasing three years rather than buying.
Yep, that is one thing that we definitely looked at, and, you know, software's always evolving at the end of the day. So at least with the lease, this, I mean, not only the savings that we see instead of purchasing it, the lease also includes everything. So there's always going to be the software updates and everything else that are included. Maintenance is included with the cost per month. And in the, at the end of the day, if, if down the road in five years, we decide that there's a better software package for, whether it's my department or the city as a whole, or we go to a different situation, this data is ours, we're not committed to the software, you know, as a whole, and we can get the data out. So I am comfortable with the lease. And again, the savings upfront is definitely a nice feature.
Any other questions? Anybody like to make a motion?
I'd move for approval.
Second.
Motion by mail, second by Pritchatsky that we approve of this three-year lease agreement with MuniLogic for code enforcement and inspection software at a cost not to exceed $28,080.
It would actually be $93.60 per year, Mayor. But the, yes, total cost, sorry. You're right. It's a three-year lease, but it's $93.60 per year.
Okay. So it's a three-year lease with a total cost for the three-year lease of $28,080.
Yep, sorry.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Alan Kealan. Eric Olson. Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
And Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, thanks, Brennan. Next, we have the agreement between the City of Opaque and a new group called the Opaque Area Conventions and Visitors Bureau relating to the collections and distributions of room tax funds. I know Terry's been sitting through this night, and we'll give her the opportunity to speak if she'd like to, but Henry, you want to set this up, please?
Sure, Mayor. Page 534. When the state adopted their biannual budget, there was a provision in here that pretty drastically changed room tax management. There was an attempt in the last session to do this very thing, but it was not adopted. It did make it into the budget. So that's the authority for it. The key thing, I think, the key points, tried to try to keep this as simple as possible. The key point is, is this agreement would supersede any previous agreements, whether they're in writing or implied, and this will actually simplify how we're collecting it because we had a 5% sales tax, and then I think in '07, '06, we added another 3%. So we're collecting the maximum allowed by law, and there was a distribution on 5%, and then the distribution on 3%, where the chamber would get 70% of the 3%. So in some respects, this new arrangement will make it a little bit easier to administer. So that's the authority for it, and as I stated a little bit earlier, there's movement maybe to make some technical corrections to this. So the other key thing in here is that we talk about that. Should any changes be made during the term of the agreement, we can open it back up and do adjustments and deal with it. As to term, it is a three-year agreement, however, because it's new and we want to make sure it's functioning appropriately, we do have a review period in here within about a year of its going into place, March 31 of 2017, so 15 months. And also, the chamber, the Conventions Bureau, asked in terms of renewal, for their planning purposes, that the agreement be renegotiated one year out, which is a little bit unusual. Normally, in these kind of things, you allow 90, maybe 120 days to work a successor agreement. So that's the term. The scope is, you know, they are required by the new law to do marketing and tourism promotion. As part of this agreement, there is a commitment on their part to kind of honor our process that we've followed in the past and take applications for projects. They do have the authority to establish their own criteria, and they are going to honor the agreement that we've had with WEHA through 2020 to disperse their $25,000 of the income. WEHA would still require, they'd still be required to do annual reports as they are now. Again, there'd be an open process for special event and tourism promotion dollars of our local groups. The mayor alluded to this, but right now, they are calling for a nine-member board. And Terry, you're probably going to want to ask some questions of Terry, but she can tell you a little bit about the board makeup. But this agreement would give the city two appointments on that nine-person board, and these would be voting members, and it's based on our volume of collection per 100,000 of room tax. I think this year, Kathy, we collected about 220, 240,000, which was about 20,000 more than previous year. So we had a very, very good year. In terms of the distribution, the way the law reads is the city has to distribute at least 70% to the Conventions and Visitors Bureau. We would retain 30, which is actually, from a budgetary perspective, much better than we're doing now. With the current collections, we would garner about 80,000 this year in the budget. I believe we carved out maybe 30, 20, 27. Thank you. So from that standpoint, it gives the council a lot of options going forward, which is pretty exciting about, do you want to earmark those additional room tax dollars for something that's tourism promotion-related? As I understand the law, I mean, that could just go into general coffers if you wanted. But at the level, there might be some discussions you'll want to have about doing some special projects with that. And in terms of collection, we would collect it monthly, like we are now, and disperse it on a routine basis. And then finally, there is a reporting requirement that the Conventions Bureau would provide annual program and financial reporting to the city. We also have to provide reports to the Department of Revenue, and there is a requirement in here for the Conventions and Visitor Bureau to provide any information. We might need to do that state report. So pretty much gone over each paragraph of the agreement. If you have any questions for me?
Mayor, you had alluded, Mayor, that this might not necessarily have to be done in 2016. Was that correct?
There has to be a committee, Henry, explain it.
Yeah, the tourism entity has to be in place by, in three weeks, January 1 of 2016, and they're working very diligently towards that. They've got their bylaws, and they've made their application to the IRS for their designation.
Yeah, we've, all of our paperwork has been submitted. We have our federal ID number. We've submitted all of our paperwork for our nonprofit status. We're just waiting for that to return from the government, so from our side, it's in place.
So we wanted to enter into an agreement, Paul, for a couple of reasons. One, we don't have a committee that qualifies for this within the city limits, and that's one of the requirements.
The state law says that the tourism entity needs to spend 51% of its budget on tourism promotion and tourism development. So the chamber did not qualify because we're a chamber, and we have always played the tourism role, but according to our budget, that we were close, but not exact. So that's why we came forward and created a separate entity. It'll be under the chamber umbrella, but it's a separate convention and visitors bureau.
So you're right, we couldn't wait to enter into this agreement with this new group, but they did put in a lot of effort to make sure that we had an organization within the city that qualified for that. And that's why I wanted to, to get it on this agenda for this month, so that it would be in place by January 1st. They really don't do anything until January 1st of 2017 under the...
Will continue our normal roles, but yes.
Right. But I mean, this, the funds will not go into this account until 2017.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, and I'm assuming the board will get appointed. That'll happen over this coming months.
Yep.
They're going to probably talk about the grant process or any other business. The law does require one individual from the lodging industry?
Yep, there needs to be a lodging representative from the taxing... Yep, there needs to be a lodging representative from the taxing municipality. So we will have a lodging, a person, and then, um, at least four, four or five, um, board members that are in tourism-related businesses, so they could be retail or restaurants.
Terry, maybe you could explain how you're going to manage, how, how this group was going to manage it as far as like, uh, um, I mean, they're not going to have a separate building?
No.
They're not going to hire new people?
No, um, it'll still, all be housed in the chamber office. Um, we currently have a tourism, a vice president of tourism. He will become, I mean, he's our full-time, um, employee that works on tourism promotion and development now, and so he will continue on in that role. Um, our chamber staff will continue to support that role in any efforts that, I mean, we always do our events and those types of things, and all of our staff participates in that. So, uh, kind of, in our house, not a lot will change except for basically the bookwork and the reporting, um, rather than it coming from the Opaaca Area Chamber of Commerce. It'll now come from the Opaaca Area Convention and Visitors Bureau. So it's all still going to be housed under the chamber roof.
Well, the good thing about that too, though, is, is that we always had this discussion on where that tourism money was going, and it was being intermixed with the dues and, and so on because it was within one budget. So now this is completely separate.
Yep, it'll be separate bookwork. We're actually gonna, from the chamber's standpoint, we're actually separating that out this year, so it's kind of our trial year into the two thousand seventeen. So, um, we'll have everything in place and working, um, when this actual agreement takes place.
And when Henry talked about the monies that the city could keep, that's the maximum we could keep. Like, you know, we can always distribute more if we want to, and I think the other part that is assumed here too, and is that, um, you know, the city is still in charge of collecting the room tax dollars, and there is a cost for us to do that. That's included in that thirty percent that we can keep. We don't keep the five percent like we, is it five percent?
Yes, sir, yep.
Five percent for administrative costs. That's included in that thirty percent. Of course, we don't have to worry about that until next year, but, late next year, but it's, uh, good to know, knowledge there. I, I have to tell you that we met a couple of times with a group from the chamber and that this new committee, and Henry and myself, um, met and, uh, I can't remember who else was with us, but, uh, they have gone over this with a pretty good fine tooth, and we've adjusted some things that we felt needed to be adjusted. Uh, so this is the time, if you feel that there should be, i-if you're willing and ready to approve it tonight, this would be the time to make any suggestions that you would like to make.
So, uh, please, uh, um, if, so next year, the room tax applications would be going through this new group versus through us. Is that correct?
Well, uh, yeah, there's two train of thoughts there. I mean, one, and Henry's kind of switched back and forth on the thought. We collect the money in two thousand sixteen, so I was assuming that the city would still be in charge of it for two thousand sixteen, and then they would take over in two thousand seventeen. But I think this is going to get fixed, uh, at the state level.
Yeah, I think it's open to, uh, interpretation. It's pretty loosely written. Not going to get, get too deep into weeds. We collect the fourth quarter, and in the first three quarters, then we meet in October, November, the Room Tax Committee, and doles out the money based on the applications. Well, now we would be shifting to maybe a, a calendar year collection. We wouldn't be on that scenario. It would start.
Well, we're, we're still on a calendar year. That's just how we distribute it.
Because that, because you need time to get the money in because the way we collect it, even though we collect it monthly, they have to the thirtieth of the month following the month that it's due to get it to us. So we're always sort of, uh, to get it all in, we're really kind of a month behind the month that it was collected. So the system we have now was set up to sort of account for those delays in actually receiving it, so we had a good number, uh, on the collections to know what to distribute. Right. Go ahead, Paul. Do we have any room tax dollars in arrears, and if so, where would those go? Uh, in the, in the pack, at work, we're current, yeah. But I, I tell you, it was a very good that the council a number of years ago went to a monthly collection because we were on quarterly and we had some actors that we had to go after.
Plus, we also, they have to have a license, is it?
Yeah, that's the other thing. We put in a license. If they didn't pay their license untimely, we could pull their operation, you know, we had, put a, we got annual license they got to fill out. Kathy, did you?
Um, we do keep up, um, and make sure that by the due date that they do, um, submit the funds. Um, Sandy, I'll let Sandy know that the, I'm missing one. Um, she'll contact them. They also have late fees. They'll have, there's an interest to them. So we do, we do keep on top of it.
Interestingly enough, this, there is a state requirement that's going to follow with this, but nobody knows what that requirement is yet. So we'll have to wait and see what that's going to be.
Mayor, um, you mentioned the, the process that we use to, uh, distribute funds now where you take the fourth quarter and then the first three quarters, which, which we did just recently do last week. So we still have fourth quarter of two thousand fifteen, and then the first three quarters of two thousand sixteen. What's to prevent us from doing the same thing again in two thousand sixteen with four quarters of money?
There isn't anything, I don't think, right now, but I, like Henry said, and, and repeated it a couple of times, I think the state, we're not alone. We're not the only community that's in that situation. So I think the state is probably going to tell us what, what to do here, because that's what they've been doing so far.
Yeah, all right.
So I agree with you right now. I think that we're still in control, but.
It's still going to come down to that the Visi- Visitors Bureau is going to get seventy percent of the money, whatever we collect, no matter whether it's third quarter, fourth quarter, or whatever, that pot of money is seventy percent is going to the Visitors.
Well, but if they're not active until two thousand seventeen, we still have four quarters of money in two thousand sixteen.
Why, we will, we will actually have five quarters of money in sixteen, because we'll have the fourth quarter from fifteen.
Right.
Holding over, and then we'll have four quarters from sixteen being collected.
Why couldn't the Room Tax Committee from the city meet in December of two thousand sixteen and distribute four quarters of money?
There's nothing to stop the committee from doing that.
We don't think.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, that's where, that's, now, if you do that, January one, they have no income to operate off. No grants will happen because they have to generate.
Well, we still distribute, how much money does the chamber receive from the room tax dollars?
Currently?
Currently, yeah.
Um, just over a hundred thousand.
Yeah, so, I mean, that probably wouldn't change. So to say they're not going to get anything, Henry, is not accurate.
Well, the, as, as the way I've envisioned it, if you pass this, we would start distributing in January, but the fact of the matter is, is we won't have those dollars, like it says in the agreement, till March fifteenth potentially is when we have to pay it. So I would fully expect we should, this picture should get clear by then, I hope, whether they adopt something different or not. But from our standpoint, I think there's going to be twenty seventeen budget implications. If, uh, you decide how you want to collect it and what you want to do, we're going to know what that number is for our twenty seventeen budget. If we keep out thirty percent going forward now, we're going to have those funds available potentially for.
A lot of it's going to determine both how the Department of Revenue interprets the law and requires the reporting. So until that report, financial report that we have to provide to the Department of Revenue gets developed and we know what we can do, what we're reporting to the money, reporting the use of the money, then that's going to determine the, the budget impact.
Well, before John Hart tells us that we're getting too far off of what we're discussing here, let's, let's get back to the agreement that we are talking about that would be between the city and this, uh, new group called the Opaaca Area Convention and Visitors Bureau. Is that, uh, the official name?
That is the official name.
Okay.
It'll be incorporated.
Okay.
Attorney Hart, looking at the agreement, do you have any input into these agreements that are written?
I, I did not draft that agreement, but I did review it before, before you, and made some comments to Henry about it. It's pretty solid.
Any other discussion? Anybody like to make a motion?
Make a motion. We entered an agreement between the city and the Opaaca Area Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Second.
Motion by Whitman, second by Pritchatsky that the city enters into a agreement with the Opaaca Area Convention and Visitors Bureau as it relates to, uh, the distributions of room tax funds. Any discussion?
I just think there's a few questions here that are still unanswered as to whether who's going to be doing what in two thousand sixteen. I mean, that, that, that hasn't been answered.
This agreement doesn't start till January first of two thou-, well, I shouldn't say that. The, the funds doesn't start until January first of two thousand seventeen. They will not receive any funds until January first of two thousand seventeen at the earliest from the city, unless you consider that, that money that we, that the Room Tax Committee agreed to, which is what, six, seventy-one hundred dollars. That's the only thing that that Convention Bureau will receive in two thousand sixteen. I, I'm okay with you waiting, Paul. I, I just felt that it was very important to get, get an agreement into place because we don't, if they're not our option, we got to get another option, and today is the fifteenth of December, and we have to have somebody in place by the end of the month. We got sixteen days to get somebody in place.
And, and I don't have any, I certainly have, think that, that, uh, this new entity is a good, certainly sounds fantastic. I'm just, just questioning the, you know, because the, the term of the agreement starts January one, um, and I don't see anything in here saying that during the year two thousand sixteen that the, the Room Tax Committee is going to be doing the dispersment. Is, is kind of what I'm getting at. Doesn't spell that out.
Somebody want to help me out here? I'm not sure what his question is exactly, but I, 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 I think you're, what you're asking is, is that nobody really knows how it's going to be handled for two thousand sixteen, so why are we entering into an agreement when we don't know how that money's going to be handled?
Yeah, that would pretty much.
So what's your answer to that, Henry and Terry and John Hart?
Well, you know, no, but we've read through this so many times. And I should ask Henry, should this actually be starting January one, two thousand seventeen, and not two thousand sixteen?
Well, I think that is the, the confusion because when they did the final version of the bill, there was some change done. I mean, I, I've been operating under assumption that twenty, well, January of two thousand sixteen, because that's the trigger that you have to have an, you know.
That's when the organization has to be in place, but the actual distribution of the seventy percent doesn't actually start until seventeen.
So I think what you have to do, have the decision to make, I guess, is what do you do when, with all that we collect up until the fall of next year or the end of the year? And I think that's what we're going to try to hopefully get some, um, clarification on.
Let me try and clarify again why I tried to bring it forward this month. There, there has to be a group within your community that spends at least, what percentage?
Fifty-one percent.
Fifty-one percent of their money towards tourism. There is no group, yet. They're the group, the only group that's proposing to do that. So if we do not enter into agreement by the end of this year, and I agree, we don't need an agreement till January first of two thousand seventeen. They control what goes in there because they're the only group. So they could tell us what to do. So if we do it now, we could, we can negotiate what we want in here.
If it makes you feel better, maybe the caveat is, is we continue to collect the dollars. Nothing gets distributed until this gets resolved, that there's questions on how it's distributed. Again, Mayor, I mean, you're going to appoint committees, uh, or some, you know, that, in, in April, May, or whenever, the council, the Room Tax Committee gets appointed. So that's another four months that a decision needs to be made. Will that committee get appointed? So we've got some, uh, points along the continuum here that we can reset and deal with the ambiguity we got right now. There is a little bit. And to add a lot more confusion to it, what determines designation? If you don't have your IRS number, maybe you're not a bona fide tourism entity. I mean, you've got, you've got a tax exempt number, but you don't have the official IRS designation.
We don't have our letter. We don't have our letter from the IRS.
So, you know, how's that get dealt with?
Please.
Mayor, um, I see three things happening here. Uh, Terry's forming her entity, all right? Um, uh, we're collecting the money, and for two thousand sixteen, the entity doesn't get any money, um, from room tax, uh, collections, and we have an agreement between the city and the, uh, and, and the new entity. I think all we're doing here tonight is approving the agreement. We're not deciding how to distribute money in two thousand sixteen, and we're not worried about the details of their tax number or anything else of, of them forming the committee. What, what I think we need to do is look at this agreement between the city and the entity and either approve it or not approve it, um, and not worried about any of these other details regarding money or the details of their formation.
Okay.
Can I just make one comment?
You can.
In this agreement, under number two, it says the term, it should be from January one of sixteen through December of eighteen, because the entity doesn't, this doesn't actually start until January of, one of two seventeen, two thousand seventeen. Should this agreement, the term of this agreement, actually be January one of two thousand seventeen through December thirty-first of two thousand and nineteen? So it's a three-year agreement.
So, Paul, to answer your question, then, if we change that term from January first of two thousand seventeen through the nineteenth, so it doesn't start, even though we enter into the agreement today, it doesn't start till January first of two thousand seventeen. Doesn't that solve?
Doesn't that make more sense?
Yeah.
Because this isn't actually supposed to be, the seventy per, the seventy-thirty split isn't supposed to start until two thousand seventeen. So that's really when this agreement should probably be for. Does that make sense?
But I would argue council might want to, even though I think they have some discretion, then why not do it early? Because it gives us some better budget options for next year.
Henry, we, we still have to follow the rules.
Right.
So if we can't do the thirty percent next year, we still got to follow the rules. I mean, if the old rules are in place, we still got to follow the old rules. We, we don't get to decide which rules we have to follow, do we?
Well, again, that's.
I don't know.
Well, if you change that, I mean, that, that does address a lot of, a bunch of concerns, and then we'll monitor it, and once we get the, we'll clear picture, we'll come back and let you know and find out.
Can Mr. Hart unconfuse us on this agreement? Does that sound better?
That was simple.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion now? You'll have to.
We already have a motion.
I will, like, could I amend?
Did we have a motion? Okay. So we need to amend that?
I will amend my motion to, to state the term of this agreement shall be from January first, two thousand seventeen through December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, from two thousand nineteen, sorry.
December.
Yes, December thirty-first.
Yeah, okay. And we had a first and a second. Scott, you're okay with amending that?
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as that, if the state requires us to have an agreement, we have an agreement. They don't really care when, or, well, they care when it's going to start, but yeah, I agree.
We're not requi-, well, I hate to. We're not requi, I hate to, to do this, but we're not required to have an agreement by January 1st of 2016. We don't have to have an agreement until January 1st of 2017. And that's why it makes sense to change the years. We just have to have an entity that qualifies by January 1st of 2016.
Correct.
Which I think Terry's got under control.
I think you got it. I hope so.
Yeah.
I think I understand. All right, I'm, I'm good with that, yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Does that change the 60 days prior to December 31st of 2017?
Yeah, I'll, I'll get all the dates corrected in here, Steve.
Sure.
I think your board approved this.
Yes.
Yeah. The date change, I can create an issue.
We can, yeah, I'm sure that won't be an issue.
Okay. Any other discussion? Sandy will call her own.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Gillian Peterson?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
And Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Terry, thanks for.
I hope you all have a nice Christmas. Thank you.
You too. Now that it's getting close to 8 o'clock, I want to make sure that I have a T-vote, so don't anybody tell me who won the voice till I get off. All right? All right, let's move on. License report number 1295, operator's license.
Make a motion, we approve the operator's license.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Whitman, that we approve license report number 1295. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. License report number 1296, this is a taxi cab driver's license. Who'd you approve? Motion by Mayo, second by Olson, that we approve the license report number 1296. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. License report number 1297, this is a dance hall licenses.
Move to approve.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Dave Peterson, to approve license report number 1297. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. We are on to no issues, projects, discussions for tonight. Communications recommendations of the mayor. I just wanted to, I have nothing except to wish everybody a happy holidays, hope you're safe and enjoy your, your, hopefully some days off during that timeframe. Anybody else have any comments? If not, we'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Hagan, that we adjourn till our next regular scheduled meeting, which is January 5th, 2016, subject to call. All in favor, signify by, by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried.